The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Joe Segura Jr.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, the first agenda on the meeting is approval of the minutes for our February 16th council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the February 16th meeting minutes was provided in your packets and is presented for your approval by resolution.
Does anybody have any corrections, questions, or additions? If none, we'll entertain action by resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the minutes from the February 16th city council meeting. Second?
I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation of Vietnam Veterans Memorial Flag and Donation for a Flagpole at the City Cemetery. Betsy Porter? Good evening.
Last year, the Daughters of the American Revolution Fort Morgan chapter were honored with this flag, and we're going to hold it up so you can see it. And I approached John about displaying it somewhere in the city, and after some consulting with the rest of the team, they determined that the cemetery where the other flags were would be the appropriate place. And we honor our Vietnam veterans especially because it's the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. And we're happy to present this flag to the city of Fort Morgan and also a check for the flagpole, which is up, and thank you very much. And we certainly hope that all our veterans are going to enjoy it. Jerelyn Hall, who is our chapter regent, is going to explain to you a little bit about that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have been collecting names, rank, and branch of service from all the veterans that served from 1955 through 1975 in order that we can present them with a beautiful certificate from the national organization Daughters of the American Revolution in gratitude of their service. And as of now, I have 28 names from Morgan County. They do not have to live here. If they have a relative here, that's fine, and they do not have to be living. We are going to present these special certificates to these veterans at the flag raising ceremony. We're going to invite their families and any interested community members, show our gratitude. Thank you. So now it's my pleasure to present this flag and the payment to the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. When was that, or when were you going to have the flag raising? Do you have a date set?
Memorial Day. We can, we're hoping to work with the DFW.
Okay.
And do it at that time. And there are a lot of state DAR officers who work here also.
That's it. So that was Memorial Day then. We will see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have recognition of Matt Underwood as Employee of the Quarter. Mr. Miller and Mr. Wells.
Mayor and council, we're very happy tonight to present to Matt Underwood the recognition of our Employee of the Quarter. There are a lot of really, really nice things said about Matt, but the things that really stand out is his leadership, his willingness to go above and beyond and make sure that the people that he works with and that work with him are taken care of and that he's setting the example. So in recognition of this award, we're going to give him this wonderful picture. You can hold that up. You can take that home, hang it on the wall. Even better, you know, he gets a nice certificate. Inside, we have a hundred dollar gift card. I'm not sure if that's for your wife or for you, but I guess we'll decide that later. But we just want to thank you for all the efforts that you've made as an employee of the city of Fort Morgan by meeting our goals, positive communication, respect, leading by example, and exceptional customer service. I think you exemplify that and have done a really good job of that. So thank you for all you do, and we want to present you to council for Matt Underwood. With that, I'm going to turn the time over to Doak, who also has a gift.
I'd just like to second everything Jeff said. Matt's been a great addition to the Parks and Cemetery staff and the city as a whole since he started. He's been here just about a year now and advanced quickly into cemetery foreman position and exemplifies everything you'd want in a city employee. And I would like to present this Leatherman tool, which is engraved on the side with Employee of the Quarter 2015.
Didn't tell me I was going to have to talk, but to keep it short, I'm fortunate that when I came here a year ago, I had two direct supervisors in Doak Duke and Jerry Reese, you know, who set the standard and let us know what we wanted, what we needed to be, what we wanted to aspire to be, you know, as workers of the city, you know, right away. I find that very fortunate. I've been on the other end where I haven't enjoyed working for direct supervisors. So it's been a treat for me in that sense, as I've been here getting to know Josh, his expectations, all the way up to, you know, Mr. Wells here and of course, city councils. You know, it's been in line with the direction I like to work, how I like to work, how I like to go about things. And so I think it's been a really good fit. But I got to admit, I'm, you know, I wouldn't be, you know, even nominated for something like that if it wasn't for the guys I also work with every day. I want to name Felix Rodriguez, Brian Probasco, few in my seasonals, you know, that I worked with this year. I came over during a transition time, middle of the season, I, you know, while I was getting acclimated, getting used to things, those guys were able, you know, I was able to lean on those guys and move things in the right direction. I'm not going to sit here and tell you we got everything fixed. We got a long way to go over there. We've got high goals, high expectations, not only set from you guys, from, you know, my spheres, but also from the people over there in that office. And we're going to work hard to attain them. It's not going to be perfect along the way. It's got plenty of challenges. But I'd like to think the city of Fort Morgan can feel good about the people they have over in the office at 601 West Eighth Avenue, that that's what we're striving to be. We're striving every day to make it better, the citizens of Fort Morgan, and for, you know, any patron who has a loved one who's there. That's really what I have to add. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. Not so sure I deserve it, but I feel the people I work with, you know, deserve it as much as I do, so I'll take it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do deserve it.
One other thing I forgot to add is that as part of the Employee of the Quarter, Matt gets to go to lunch with the city manager. And Matt's, I just have to share this because it's so Matt. We, he wants, he asked, Sharon says, "Where do you want to go to lunch?" And he says Burger King. And that didn't work for Sharon. She's a little pushy sometimes. Said, "No, no, you're Employee of the Quarter. We got to do something nicer than that." So we went to a restaurant and it was kind of busy. And I said, "Well, what do you think? Where would you like to go?" And he's like, "Burger King?" And so we went to Burger King despite what Sharon may have thought. But, no, Matt does a really good job. We had a great meeting, and I think he's got a lot of, a lot of good years here at the city that he's going to serve the citizens and appreciate what he does. So thank you. We should probably recognize his wife, too. His wife and his daughter Easton are here to support him tonight, and I'm sure he couldn't do what he does without them.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a revision to the bylaws for the Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Frasco?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor. Tonight, I wanted to ask your permission to change the bylaws for the Fort Morgan Fire Department regarding to the retirement age limit for firefighters. In our bylaws, the line states that any firefighter who has reached the age of 55 shall be retired and placed on a retirement firefighter membership role. We would like to change that age limit to 59 instead of 55. And by doing that, that gives, right now, we actually have one member who's right in that timeframe that directly affects. And we have two, maybe three, other people that could possibly come back to the fire department. Where this really interacts is if a firefighter such as myself, I came on when I was 32, and you have to come on by the age 35. Say I had to change a job and needed to take a few years of leave of absence, and then I wanted to come back and finish out my 20. If I had taken more than three years, then I wouldn't be able to. This gives members such as myself, who, you know, started later on, a chance to change their career, have, you know, lifestyle changes, and still have a chance to come back and finish their 20 years. And so that's what we're asking, to change that limit. We have, according to our bylaws, posted it for 30 days at our station and voted on it. Our members voted yes on it. So that's why we've sent it to the council and asked for your approval to change it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments regarding the bylaw changes? Seeing none, I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to change the Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department bylaws for the retirement age from 55 years to 59 years of age.
Second?
I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. You bet. Have a good one. Thanks, Mark. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on the 2017 motion, or 2017 motion budget calendar. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Your Honor. As is required under the council's Rules of Procedure 12A, I'm responsible and required to provide a budget calendar in March to give you an idea on how we're going to develop the budget for 2017. As has become our practice over the past several years, we start early so we can end early. And because we have such a large and complex budget, it takes a lot of time to go through things. So in your packet tonight, I've provided you with the proposed budget calendar when we are going to review sections of the budget and ultimately when we plan to finish the budget out. So obviously tonight, we're going to present this and ask for discussion and approval of the budget calendar by motion. But April 19th, well, actually, March 8th, we're going to have a retreat to go over our priorities and make sure that we have the right projects in the right place, answer questions about any of those projects, and add any projects that need to be included in the 2017 budget. We'll also be looking at some longer-term budget planning ideas that have come up. So April 19th, we'll present the outcome of those goals and priorities from the March 8th planning retreat. And then on March 17th, we'll review and discuss revenues and projections of revenues for 2017. And then on June 7th, we'll present the Self Insurance Fund, liabilities, risks, and costs. July 5th, we will start presentation of the budget expenditures for the various departments, and we'll start with electric, gas, and sanitation. July 19th, we'll move to water and sewer funds. For August 2nd, we'll do the Capital Improvement Fund. August 16th, the first presentation of the departments and the general fund continued on September 6th. And then on September 20th, there'll be the presentation of the budget and the miscellaneous, which would be the miscellaneous funds and then the schedule of fees. If everything looks good at that point, we can forego October 4th and move everything up. If there still are additional questions and issues that we need to address, for example, if there are significant changes in revenue after the forecast that we need to go back and look at, we can have a retreat to sit down and go over all of the budget as a whole and answer any further questions that council has. If everything's fine, then on October 18th would be a formal, October 4th would be the formal presentation of the 2017 budget, schedule of fees, and we would put that forward as a first reading of that ordinance. And then on, depending on where it falls, November 1st or October 18th, we would have the second reading of the ordinance in a public hearing for the public to come in and provide input. Obviously, the public can come in at any time as we're reviewing the budgets for each of these different funds and departments and provide input. And we encourage the public to provide feedback during that process so that we make sure we can meet their needs as we go through that long and tedious process. But that's what we propose in developing the budget for 2017, and I'd open it up to questions and discussion.
When do we have to certify the mill levy? By December?
15th.
15th. Well, it looks like we're well ahead of schedule on this, so anybody have any conflicts or?
It's good to be done early.
Everybody approves, I would entertain a motion accepting the budget calendar as presented.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to accept the 2017 budget calendar as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Christine Casto and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next, we have a presentation on possible action on bids for a water valve exerciser with a pothole attachment for the water distribution.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to thank council for the approval of our water and sewer trucks. We greatly appreciate it. They were very much needed. And I'd like to thank Mr. Nation for presenting that in my absence. That was, I'm here to talk about the valve exerciser with pothole attachment. Pretty much the only way to maintain a valve after it's been installed and buried is to exercise it on a regular basis. Lack of, lack of maintenance will cause a valve to build up corrosion on its operating stem and in the valve seat, and particles in the water can build up in it as well, which over time will cause the valve to begin to seize or just become very hard to operate. It still happens over time with age, but with regular operation, it increases the longevity of the valve and the usefulness. Because when they build up that corrosion and the sediment, a lot of times a valve won't isolate completely anymore, and that causes a lot of problems when we've got to do maintenance on the mains later on down the road. So what this equipment will do is basically, it's going to free up operators because this machine can be operated by one person, and you can operate a valve with one person, which currently, we have a very large T-shaped pipe that we drop down into them, and a minimum of two guys, sometimes three, cheater bars, all those kinds of things need to be used sometimes to operate a valve. And even then, it may not even operate. But this equipment, it's all hydraulically run so we can actually operate it with a remote control. So make it a lot easier to use. The next problem we usually run into is accessibility. Because of the location of the valve boxes in the street, a lot of times they're full of mud, water, debris. And this has a pothole attachment, which then means we can clean the valve box on the spot, access it, and then move on to the next valve for a maintenance program. So that's kind of what we're looking out for that. The bid went out to, went on the website on January 26th, and the bid opening was February 12th. Let's see. We only had one bid received, and so staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Intermountain Sales Incorporated in the amount of $59,608.75, including freight, for an EH Wax UMT-2 Valve Maintenance Trailer to be utilized by the Water Department. Staff is also requesting some of the options that are on there as well. One of them is a T-handle for a valve, for the valve key that is included with it, and also for any decals or miscellaneous items that will be needed on the equipment to make it ready for city use. So therefore, staff is requesting council approval for expenditures not to exceed $62,000 for the purchase of an EH Wax UMT-2 Valve Maintenance Trailer, additional option decals and miscellaneous items to complete the trailer for city use.
So you guys don't want to exercise them with three guys?
We've been doing it forever. I guess we can keep going.
I was thinking about seasonal help with, you know, some offenses for defensive linemen from the local high schools.
That would be nice.
Well, I've seen you guys out in the streets wrestling with them before, and I've been in Brent's position, so it's probably something that's past due. So anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain action by resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Intermountain State, Intermountain Sales Incorporated for an EH Wax UMT-2 Valve Maintenance Trailer with a T-handleer option in an amount not to exceed $62,000.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. All in favor? Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Next, we have MEAN 101, Carol Brown.
Your Honor, I just would like to quickly introduce Carol. Carol's been with MEAN for several years. She's one of their great staff members and has recently, in the last year, been promoted to the member relations representative role and is already running into technical difficulties. That's usually how it works. But if anybody can resolve technical difficulties, it's Carol, because I've watched her at MEAN board meetings in her previous role handle these technology issues very well. But it's my pleasure to introduce her tonight and want to thank her for coming all the way out here to talk to us a little bit about MEAN and answer questions. And I'll turn the time over to Carol. So Carol, thank you for being here.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and Council, for allowing me to come out and answer any questions that you might have. I know MEAN has been in the forefront of your minds for several years now, and I just, I want to come out and answer any questions, help you get reconnected again with MEAN, bring some of the new people up to speed on who we are, how we're connected, and what our role is and what your role is as a member owner of MEAN. So this is just, again, about strengthening the connection between MEAN's member owners and staff in-house. As we go through the presentation, please stop me if you have any questions. It's not, I'm not formal. If you have any discussion, that would be, that would be a good time to do it. It's my goal here tonight to leave knowing that I've answered your questions, and if there's something that comes up and I don't know the answer, I will get it, and I will get the answer back to you. My role as the member relations representative is to be a consistent single point of contact for our members and for staff so that the message that we send is consistent, and it's the right message. It all goes, it funnels through me unless it's something very technical with, such as dispatch or something like that. But I'm the primary contact with our members and staff. I have a few other responsibilities. I'm the Key Accounts Coordinator. That's a new program that we're just starting up. It's a little different than regular key accounts because there are three people or three entities involved instead of just the city and the end-use customer. I also manage the MEAN Scholarship Program, and I believe Fort Morgan has taken advantage of that several times. Excuse me. Again, though, my purpose is to reinforce the understanding that MEAN has and to emphasize the role that all of our members play, tell you what MEAN is about, and to let you know that we work for you. You own us, and we are you, and without our members, MEAN would not exist. We're not-for-profit. We're run like a utility. We have to adhere to the same Open Meetings Act and all the rules that utilities have to abide by. And so by law, we are just like a utility. So we can start at the beginning with NMPP Energy. NMPP Energy is an umbrella for four separate entities. We have wholesale gas. We have wholesale electricity. We have retail gas. And then we have member services, which, which includes, oh, thank you, thank you, which includes computer services, anything that, any, any, any software programs that municipalities need to run the system, the systems that they're charged with. So, who is NMPP? NMPP helps communities retain local control, and we guard that public ownership piece very tightly, as we know all of our members do. They're very, very close to that. And we have, again, we've developed a line of products. That's, that's part of the NMPP Energy part, the NMPP part, or Power Pool, as some of you might know, provides those products and services to help municipalities help themselves so that you don't have to go out and get a third party involved. You can help, this is, help you keep it in-house, basically. So NMPP was created 40 years ago through the Nebraska Legislature, strictly created for NMPP as a not-for-profit circus organization, service organization to provide municipal utilities with related services. So we began as just providing services for the smaller communities that decided they no longer wanted to be with the larger, the big guys. They wanted to be out on their own. Together, the four entities, the NPGA, MEAN, ACE, and NMPP Energy, they share common services. So they're four separate entities. They have separate budgets. They have separate directors. They're completely separate entities, but they share services such as legal, IT, human resources, communications, things that everybody has to have. But instead of each of the companies employing those five or six or 10 people, it's a pool. And so those services are pooled, then the hours are billed out as, as you use, as you use those personnel hourly. So it's, again, it's economies of scale for many of our member communities who couldn't, who couldn't do some of the things, the services that we provide for them. The, the pool has an annual meeting, which is the annual meeting this year is in Grand Island. I hope you're able to go.
We're signed up.
At, good. At that meeting is where representatives are voted by communities. So the larger communities, up to, for instance, up to 1,000, get together, they vote, they vote for a representative to represent them on the Members Council. The towns who have over 500 up to 1,000 are those up to 5,000. So each group elects an individual to represent their interests on the power pool. And then they are also on, represented then on the Joint Operating Committee. The Joint Operating Committee is a committee that, that administers the agreements that, that that each of the entities has with legal and HR and IT and communications and all that. So all those, all of those contracts are administered through the JOC, and they recommend the annual budgets for each of the separate communities, I mean, entities, and, and they also hire the Executive Director. And I think, I think Bob has been out here, is that right, Jeff? Has Bob been here? Bob Bailey?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So he's our new Executive Director. Those people, the JOC people, are the ones who, who hire and, and directly supervise, if you will, the Executive Director for all of the entities. This is, MEAN's representative is Ron Doggett, who is the Chair, the Vice Chair of the MEAN Board, Tom Goulet, who is the Chairman of the Board, and Jeff Wells, who is the Chairman of the Management Committee. Those three individuals represent MEAN's interests when it comes to Joint Operating Committee matters. Those other, they're all officers, all 16 or 12 of those people are officers of each of those respective entities. Some of the services that are available as a member of NMPP or the Power Pool, you have a variety of services that are available to you. We provide the expertise, we provide advocacy, and utility-related products and services. We encourage our members to use these services. One of the services that MEAN provides is if a community wants to have, chooses to have a cost of service and a rate design study done, and they use NMPP staff to do that, MEAN will pay 50% of that for the community. If, obviously, if you go outside and you, and to a, excuse me, to a third party, then it would be 100% on you, but if you go through NMPP services, then MEAN would pay 50% of that. That's one of the bigger things that's available. We have a lot of the general audits, infrared audits, Bob, MEAN can come out and perform on any of your large entities to find out, you know, what their load factors are, if they're, if they're really seeing some problems in efficiency, or, you know, those audits can, those audits can come out, he can come out and do those audits, and there's a lot of surprises that come in those audits people just don't, you don't think about. So, the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska, or MEAN, and sometimes it's not always been a fun acronym to have, especially of late. MEAN was formed in 1981 under the provisions of the Municipal Cooperative Finance Act as a political subdivision of the state of Nebraska. And we are unique in that it is part of the most complex joint action agency in the United States. And because of the location of MEAN's member owners in Iowa, Nebraska, Colorado, and Wyoming, MEAN has the largest footprint in the United States, which is roughly the size of Alaska or 15%. It is the only one like it in the country. Sometimes that's good, and sometimes that's special. But we are, you know, we are what we are. We're a lot of small communities, and, and when people need help, and we answer, and it's just kind of taken us out in, into other states. Obviously, we started in Nebraska. That's where the majority of our members are, but we're, we're growing. And this map right here can show you where our members are located, and we typically, we will meet our, have our quarterly meetings in North Platte. North Platte is a member of the Power Pool, but they are not a member of MEAN. We hold them in North Platte because it is most centrally located for all of our members. It's not at a disadvantage for, a constant disadvantage for specific members. So we just, we continue to hold it in North Platte, and because it has a large enough facility that we can hold our meetings. When we have a typical meeting, we have about 60, 60, 70 people, members that come to a meeting, and so we have to have the facilities to, to allow them to, to vote, to work, to, and, and North Platte is, has unfortunately, the largest facility in this, in that area.
So Carol, if you go back to that really quick, I'm sorry, I should have got you. We are, as she stated, the largest joint action agency as far as geographical location for coverage, and that presents a lot of interesting issues for us as a, as a community, but also as an organization of MEAN. Iowa is covered by an RTO called MISO, which is a regional transmission organization. Nebraska just became part of SPP a few years ago, and you'll recall, SPP had some issues with us a few years ago that we had to resolve, and we are still in the Wild West of WAPA and Western, and so we're, we're still non-regulated when it comes to those transmission opportunities, but it's coming our way.
Yeah.
What we see is the biggest, what used to be one of the biggest advantages that we had in training electricity and power across, if you look at that, what is that, like 1,000 miles?
Yeah.
Back and forth. When a storm comes in, they usually go west to east. Gets cold in Colorado first, the need for energy goes up. We can trade stuff on the, used to be able to trade stuff on the east side to the west side for a better price than we could get in the east, so we take our excesses and move everything we had over there, sell it in a market on the west side of the tie for a lot more than we got in the east. Well, then, as the storm progressed and left Colorado and ended up in Iowa, we'd do the opposite, and we would trade energy or sell energy back and forth across the different, across the tie and in the different zones. We can't do that anymore because all of the transmission is now regulated through these RTOs, and our profit margins have been limited to almost nothing when we start to make those trades because everything's tied up, and you had the day-ahead requirements, but you also have to lock in like a monthly pro forma of, of how long, how you're going to be, and it gets very complex in the market to try and make money. So, some of the things that we've had to do, and we've talked about here, is change our rate structure to meet the changing rate environment, and long-term, some of the things we're talking about in the ad hoc committee and on the board are how do we address distributive generation? If you have distributive generation, which means generation within your own footprint, so here in Fort Morgan, some, some examples of distributive generation that we've seen in Iowa have been solar gardens, fairly large solar gardens. We've looked at other options here in Fort Morgan, and I think that's going to be one of the big things that we're looking at because we're not going to see that advantage in the market because of the RTOs and transmission. We're going to be looking at our own generation within our group. So, it is very complex, and there's a lot of things that we're looking at to make, obviously, our individual communities better, but also the organization as a whole.
Right. As, as Jeff said, MEAN has rights across the Sydney tie, the ACDC tie, so you, we can move, and we have generators on both sides of the tie, and we have resources on both sides of, purchased resources on both sides of the tie. So before 2003, when that big blackout hit the coast, and the coast was dark for, I don't know, it was days, that's when the government stepped in and said, you know, apparently you people need our help, so they stepped in and they established these regional transmission organizations, and like Jeff said, we don't have that ability now to, that arbitrage that we had shifting energy across that tie to get it to the other parts of the country. He's also said that we have to, now what we have to do with these organizations is MEAN has to advise each of the three. MEAN has three footprints. We have MISO, SPP, and WEC, and for each one of them, we have to bid, bid in our load. Everyone else does too. We have to tell them what our, what our load is, and there's a whole formula that goes into what resources are, are used first, and then how it's distributed back, then they sell it back to us. So there are many things, and then we serve our load. So there are many things now that are very much beyond our control. We used to be able to move it, and we used to be able to say, yeah, we'll, we'll take your bids and we'll, and you'll, you know, or no, we're not, you know, if you want the energy, here's the price, you know, we don't have that ability anymore. And so now we've learned that, and he, like he said, we, we changed our budgeting system. Before, when MEAN had that arbitrage, that ability to make money, when the bills came in, we just, we just paid the bills. We didn't pass the, the increases down. We kept our, kept our rates low. Now we have to go to more of a, or we have already gone to more of a utility-based budget instead of a cash basis budget, and so we're running more like a utility now, when, so we have, whether we have, selling the electrons or not, basically, the mortgage still has to be paid, and so that's where the fixed cost recovery charge kind of budgeting has come in, and then the base energy, flat energy rate, and then your transmission. So that's kind of how we, we moved from having the ability just to pay the bills as they came in and keep rates low, to having to deal with regulations and compliance, and, and now the, the electric world that we have to, to operate within. So it's been a learning experience for us as well as our, all of our members. It's not been, obviously, it's not been a pleasant experience, but we learned, and we are, I think now, we're, we're in the black, we're doing well, and we hope we've, we've got over this hump, because it's not been fun. I'm sure you know that, too. When MEAN responds to an RFP, to a community who is looking to change providers or their contracts are expiring, and we respond to an RFP, we have, we use about 10 different kinds of service schedules. We have those at our disposal. We typically do only offer Js, Ks, and Ms. Service Schedule Ms., which is what Fort Morgan is, is long-term requirements. The Service Schedule K, we have three of those, and those are generally up to 10 years. They are, but they have a 5% adder on top of the M. So the Service Schedule M participants are the lowest rates that we have. And then we have three Service Schedule Js that, those are off the market, so they're usually shorter term. We've had some Service Schedule Js that we've had, we've provided power for two weeks because they were in between and they, they just needed to have power, and they were kind of stuck there with nothing. And so, it's short as two weeks, it could go up to 10 years. Typically, our 10-year contracts are, are Service Schedule Ks. And we have 54 Ms. Those are the people that when MEAN goes out to the bonding agencies, they look right through MEAN as, as, as an entity, and they look right to every single one of our Service Schedule M and Service Schedule K participants. They look at every one of our cities to see how healthy and viable you are because you're the ones that are, are the base, the foundation of MEAN. So if, if, if our members are healthy, then MEAN is healthy. And so what, what pool strives to do then, and MEAN also, is, is to help our members help themselves to be healthy organizations, because the healthier you are, then the healthier MEAN is as a whole. We have five service power participants who we only provide service to. Typically, the traders will, will buy energy for them or, and move stuff around and all kinds of services in the back room. We do not provide any electricity to them, but we charge them for this service. So those are Service Schedule, Service Schedule participants. The representatives and alternates of the, of MEAN, when a community chooses to sign a contract with MEAN, it signs what is called the IRPA, and that is the Electrical Resources Pooling Agreement. It is an industry standard agreement. MEAN didn't make it up. It's been around since forever. When a community signs that, they are then, have, they have a voice then in the operation of MEAN, which means that they are a member of MEAN's Management Committee. And each community then must appoint a representative and an alternate to represent it on the Management Committee. A community can take additional steps, as Fort Morgan has done, to then belong to be a member of the Board of Directors. Now, the Management Committee is the operational part of MEAN, and the Board of Directors is the financial part typically of MEAN. So the roles that the representatives and the alternates play are very important because we, we stress that it's important for them to be at meetings, to understand, to ask questions, because the better information that they collect and bring back to you, the better decisions you're able to make with, with a bill that is probably the largest bill that you pay every month. And so, the more you know about it, the better off, the better off you are. And so we encourage our members to be active, ask questions, sit on committees so that you can understand, especially the power supply and the finance, and understand how we operate, why, why the decisions are made, the way that, the way that they're made. Our participants are member owners. You are, you own MEAN. Earlier, I mentioned the IRPA, and the objectives of the IRPA are to pool together resources for adequate power supply, again, for economies of scale and for equitable sharing of the risks and rewards. And so we share things like the legal services and HR and communications, so everybody's not paying a huge amount, everybody just pays a little bit as you need it. Each member-owner community is an important part of MEAN as a whole. We are you, and that's it, because without our member-owners, MEAN would not exist. That's the only reason why we exist, is because of the members who have come together and said, we want to do something better than what we had before. And now they have a voice, and they have, they have a voice. They can, they can change direction, and they have. They've made decisions and changes that, that have shaped this organization, and that's the way it should be, because that's, that's who we are. MEAN Services Committee goes through every year, provides some services that it thinks that it wants its Service Schedule M and K members to have. Right now, MEAN pays 100% of APPA and D dues. MEAN provides some computer software support for the plan. That's the computer software for billing and cemetery management and all kinds of other programs that cities need to run. We have a cost of service rate design study. Again, I mentioned that, that MEAN will pay 50% if you use NMPP versus a third party. We have a scholarship program, and then we have the Energy Management Rider, Circuit Rider Program, where Bob will come out and do those, those audits at, at your request. So we have the Management Committee, and again, the Management Committee is the operating arm of MEAN. It approves power supply anytime if we've got contracts expiring or if we need to, like we're looking at solar issues, all of that will run through the Power Supply Committee, and it, the, it reviews and revises the policies and procedures of the IRPA because it is part of the operating, operations, and the, the operational portion of the financial and policies, financial and operational policies and procedures of MEAN as a whole. So it, the Management Committee establishes the rates for the Service Schedule J and the Service Schedule K participants, and the Board establishes the rates for the Service Schedule M participants. The Management Committee has four standing committees that report to it, that makes recommendations from, to it. One of them is the Power Supply Committee. The Power Supply Committee will vet and make recommendations on issues related to reliability standards, the bulk power supply. It oversees the planning and the operating studies as well as developing short-term and long-term resource plans. For instance, if MEAN has to go out, if we lose, the contract expires, like our Black Hills contracts will be expiring, so if those resources are needed to continue to support our load, our base load, then we're going to have to go out and replace those somehow. Then staff will take a recommendation to the committee, the committee members will vet it out, and then they'll make a recommendation to the, to the Management Committee. At the same time, the Power Supply Committee meets, the Finance Committee meets, so that they hear the same information, but the Power Supply Committee will, will vote on the power supply, and then the Finance Committee will vote on the finance part of that. So typically, we, our committees will meet jointly. We figure it's the same, it's the same information, it's just voting differently, and it's easier to, when we have to bring that many people together to make, to maximize their time, because typically, it's, as you know, it's two or three their time. Because typically, it's, as you know, it's two or three days every quarter for these people, and sometimes, the smaller communities, that's all that's working in the city, is two or three people, and it's hard for them. So, we try to maximize that time, when we do have them before us. The MEAN Board of Directors, there are, of the 68 MEAN members, 54 of them are Service Schedule M participants, and they have, which is also the same number, that are members of the Board of Directors. They've taken extra steps, mostly it's paperwork, and it's a very long and legal process, to become a member of the Board of Directors. The community then has to be approved, has to go through the Nebraska Power Review Board. They will approve, or not, for whatever reason, we've never had anyone not be approved, but has to go through the Power Review Board. Then, that community is added to MEAN's charter, then it comes back to the MEAN Board to vote that community in or not. So, it's kind of a lengthy process. Fort Morgan has already done that. So, when we talk about, when you go to meetings, we'll say, "Board only," or "Management only," "Management Committee only," that means that if you're not a board member, please don't vote, because you're not a member of the board. There are 16 members. There are only 16 members that are not members of the board, but we've been working on that, so. One of the standing committees of the Board of Directors is the Executive Committee, and the Executive Committee is comprised of the Board Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary Treasurer, and then, four individuals of, for at-large elected individuals of the Board. The Executive Committee has all the powers of the Board of Directors, with the exception of bonding. They cannot issue bonds, but other than that, they have all the power in between meetings, or if there's a quorum issue. You'll notice that when we send out the notice for MEAN's meetings, you'll always say that the Board of Directors, the Management Committee, and the Executive Committee will be called to order at the same time. The reason why we do that is because we have to notice it. If, for some reason, we don't have a quorum, then we can right away call the Executive Committee to order to continue on with business. We've got that many people in the room. Everyone can still participate in the discussion. It's just that now, only the Executive Committee is voting. But, we've had to do that a couple times, typically in the winter, when we're short because of Another standing committee is, again, the Finance Committee, because, again, because they're so large, to economize time and the items, we hold these meetings together. It's typically the same information. It's just that they're voting on different recommendations that they have authority to do. The Finance Committee makes recommendations on the annual budget, and the rates and schedule charges that go out to each one of our members every year, goes through, gets vetted through this committee, and then also, again, at the board level, too. So, it goes through twice. The Services Committee is the third standing committee of the Board. It meets about once a year to provide those services that we talked about before, the audits and the scholarship program and those. This year, they added a new energy efficiency program. It's for LED lighting, and so, that will start on April 1. We, it's, those, that stuff, those campus and information will be coming out, but it's not out yet. But, hopefully, there'll be a $2,500 cap, I believe, is what they're looking at, per project. So, if the city has, and this is indoor lighting, of course, but if the city has, you know, two or three projects, it can put forth two or three times. I mean, there's no cap per city. It's just per project, so that everybody has a shot at it. And this will be the first year we have that, so we'll see how that goes, and see how well that's received. Usually, it takes a couple years before people catch on, and it gets, you know, it filters down to the working people, to where they, "Oh, yeah, we do have money available." So, it'll probably be available next year, too. Typically, it is on those kinds of services that we have.
And Carol, that's not just for city buildings. That could be for a school building, or a grocery store.
Anybody in your communities.
It's to promote energy-efficient lighting.
Yep. The last standing committee that reports to the Board is the Risk Oversight Committee. It is a newly-created committee to address the risk parameters within MEAN, and I think, Jeff, you sit on that, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah. The role of the committee is, it acts as in an advisory capacity to the Board, in terms of what is the risk tolerance level that the Board feels that staff can work within. You know, signature of, like, when we're purchasing, typically, when you're purchasing energy, the traders, it's a lot of money. It just is. And so, it's like, you have three signatures to that. What's the level that, you have two people. What's the level before you have to have five people, before you get the director involved, you know? So, it's those kinds of things. What are those risks that staff can work within? And this is a fairly new committee. We established it soon after we were dealing with regulations and all the compliance issues that we have to deal with of late. This is just a diagram of the management committee and the Board, and then, the committees that report directly to them. Now, the Power Supply Committee can make, and does make, recommendations to the Board, although typically, it's because of its nature, it reports and makes recommendations to the management committee, but it does cross over. Some additional information on the MEAN meetings. They are by our bylaws, they are to be held quarterly, at least quarterly. We can hold as many meetings as we need to, but we have to have at least four. Right now, they're in January, May, August, and November, and they're subject to change, just like we had to cancel the November meeting because of weather. And so, then, because of our bylaws, then we had to have an executive meeting to meet our four-meeting quorum, so to speak, or for the year. So, not very often, but sometimes, it happens. Again, generally, the meetings are held in conjunction. The Board and the Management Committee meet together. There are times when we will not have to call one or the other. It just depends on the items that are on the agenda, and who has to vote on them. But typically, they're running consecutive. I mean, they're just bilateral, right next time. Some of the internal guiding documents that MEAN has to operate within. We have the IRPA, which is, again, that contract, the IRPA contract, that all of our members have signed with MEAN. Then, we have the policies and procedures that directly relate to the IRPA. Most of that is for urge testing, generation, capacity compensation, any of the metering, what happens if, what happens if you don't do what you're supposed to be doing, and the fines, and the legalese that goes into what is going to fall back onto the community if they don't do what they're supposed to do, in terms of regulations and compliance. They're all in the policies, the IRPA policies and procedures. We have the MEAN bylaws for the Board of Directors. That's by state law. And then, we have the MEAN Financial and Operational Policies and Guidelines. Those, financial and the operational policies are more guiding documents for staff on what kind, when we want our reserve margins to be, you know, bonding and those kinds of directions. Operational, how large do we want to be, you know, stuff for staff, guiding documents for staff. The policy, the IRPA policies are more for our members and generating. Outside influencers. This is a pretty icky part of late. Right now, those are, when we talk about outside influencers, as it relates to the power industry, you know, we think about things that are usually beyond MEAN's control, which are regulations, compliance, and weather, and the markets. And the markets are also dependent on the weather. If, like Jeff says, when this thing moves through, then these people need it, and we don't have it, or sometimes, we could sell it. Sometimes, everybody's cold, and then, everybody has excess energy, or it's hot, and nobody has any excess energy. And so, it's all, it's all, so many things that are out of our control. We do the best that we can. We have to, when we do our load forecasting, we have to submit that 18 months in advance for our load forecasting. And, you know, weather is what it is, and we do the best. Typically, it's really hot in June, July, and August, and as we found out two years ago, it wasn't. But, 18 months earlier, we had to purchase that base load. We had to have it, just in case, and that's how we ended up with the PCA's and PPA that we had to pass through to our members. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions, any discussion? Very good.
What do you like most about working for MEAN?
Now, I like, because I like to be out. You know, before, this position was not filled for a long time. It was open when I came. And in the role that I had before, I already knew all of our members. I knew them all, their faces. I knew their names. They knew me. And so, just when this position came up again, it was like, it just felt right to do that. And so, I applied, and I got it, and I just like being out here. I mean, I like coming out and saying, you know, "We're not really MEAN people."
But you are.
But we are. So, you know, answering questions, helping people understand. Sometimes, there's a disconnect between, I mean, we're so involved in-house, and with all of the acronyms and the things that we have to deal with, and sometimes, it's easy for us to lose sight about the people who are, you're running your own business. You're here only once or twice a month, and we forget that. We have to just remind people who we are, and why we're here. We're here for our members, only because of our members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Carol. I really appreciate you being here tonight and your presentation. Our electric utility and all of our utilities are extremely important, as you'll see, the next item on the agenda is a utility issue. The utilities are extremely important to our community. It provides us with, I think, a standard of living that a lot of communities don't have. We can call, or as a citizen, just about any problem we have, to the city of Fort Morgan. Most communities have to call five or six different numbers to get that done. So, we're very fortunate to have that level of service, and we're fortunate to be able to be a member in MEAN, where we actually have a say. A lot of other municipalities that have their own electric system have to buy into a co-op that they don't have the same type of representation that we are allowed under MEAN. And I think we've been able to see the benefits of that membership in the last few years, where we could sit down with the other communities and say, "Here's our problem. Here's our issue." And to our, I guess, satisfaction, they all stood up and said, you know, "Let's make this right for everybody." And we have kind of a joke, I think, at these meetings, that when everybody's equally dissatisfied, we've probably come to the right conclusion, or equally satisfied. I don't know, however you want to look at it, half-full or half-empty cup of water. But, no, I think there's a lot of value in being able to be a member, and say, "This is right, or this is wrong, and this is what we should do about it." So, thanks, Carol. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution canceling our levelized purchase plan with MPGA.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not here tonight asking for money, so let's get that out of the way first. But, we may have discovered a way to maybe save the city a little bit of money. I do want to echo Jeff's comments, and thank Carol for being here. MEAN is definitely, you know, an organization that we see the benefits of, and it helps us with the electrical side of our, you know, system and that utility. But, we also have a great partnership in MPGA with our gas utility. What we have tonight, though, is there's an opportunity that we see within the MPGA system, that we may be able to save some money for the city of Fort Morgan. They have what they refer to as the LPP. It's their levelized purchase program that they have, or purchase plan, within the system. It's basically a rate stabilization premium that they charge. We are a member of this LPP, and we started looking at the benefits of continuing to belong to this levelized program, and what the benefits are to the city of Fort Morgan. We asked our rates consultants, I know some of the newer council people have probably not met Mr. McFadden, but Michael McFadden is our rates consultant when it comes to our gas analysis. We started working with him last year on this issue. Tony Behrens, the Gas Superintendent, was instrumental in kind of working through this with Mr. McFadden, to see just exactly where some of the benefits were. But, in a nutshell, we pay a premium to be in this LPP program, and it's there to protect us when there's great volatility within the natural gas market. Now, numerous years ago, there was a lot of volatility that was in that market. We saw some big ups, and then it came right back down, and we've just kind of now leveled off with the way the gas market is. McFadden looked at all of that volatility, and then analyzed, and you have in your packet tonight, his seven-page summary report. And for those of you that don't know Mike McFadden, this is a summary report.
Yes, sir.
So, we made sure it was as brief as he could get it. But, in his analysis, looking back at it, over the period since, let me make sure I get the date right, the period back to March of 2007, there was actually only one month within that period that it was a benefit for us to belong to the LPP. All the rest of those months during that nine-year period, more or less, we were paying a premium that we weren't seeing any benefit from. He did some further analysis to see if we were not in the LPP, what type of savings that was, on page six of your report. The cumulative effect over that time period, from March of 2007 through, basically, last year, when he did this report, was, ended up costing the city of Fort Morgan to belong to that program about $944,000. And so, it's basically Tony's recommendation, and our consultant's recommendation, and now mine, that we've had a chance to go through this, that we probably really should look at getting out of this levelized program. The market is, seems to continue to be stable in the natural gas arena. I have confidence in Tony and the department about how we would be able to handle, you know, the workings of the program without being in LPP. We are not asking to leave MPGA. We're just asking to leave the program within their organization. So, we're not asking to leave membership from the gas pool itself. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I think I would like to have Tony come up. I know Jeff had asked some questions about procedurally, is our department, when we leave this program, are we going to be able to handle those type of things? Like I said, I have confidence that we'll be in good shape, but I would like Tony to address that, and his confidence in where this analysis has taken us. I would also like him just to touch on the fact that him and Mike McFadden have followed the trends now for another six months, since we originally had this report commission, and where those results are at, too, because they weren't actually included in this report. So, I'll have Tony come on and just address those couple things real quick for us.
Thanks, Brent, Mayor and Council, for the new council members. I'm Tony Behrens, Gas Department Superintendent. And like Brent said, we've looked at this, well, last year was, we kind of looked at it a little heavier, but the last couple of years, Mike and I have been looking at it vaguely, and we have noticed the city could save some money on their gas purchases. And as far as the department side of it, it's not going to affect the operations of our department, because the gas rates are broken into two separate rates. And what we're paying MPGA, that's just half of the rates. So, that won't affect our rate that we're charging for our operations side of the rate. And what we're paying MPGA, that's regulated by FERC, that we can't make any money on the gas that we're selling. We need to break even. So, and... So, and the bottom line is, if we can buy gas cheaper, the people that are going to benefit will be our ratepayers.
Yeah, and so, one of the things, the reason we got onto this levelized payment plan, if you recall, in 2007, gas prices weren't quite, well, they were a little more volatile, I think, back then than they are now. And in 2008, there was a huge spike in prices that went up, and I think we had to spend about a million and a half to $2 million out of reserves to cover the difference in cost between what we purchased and what the cost ended up being. So, it's been insurance essentially over that period of time. One of the things that we would want to consider and talk about from a financial perspective is how much of the savings we would want to put into a reserve, just so that we could self-insure against that kind of an issue coming up in the future. It really didn't put us in a bad position, because we had reserves at the time, but I think it drained a lot of the reserves that we had at the gas department at that time. So, this is a smart thing to do, and we definitely supported his staff. But on the backside of this, we'll need to also look at making sure that we have adequate reserves in place in the event that we get into a volatile situation. But we can always join the levelized payment plan in the future if we feel that we're not willing to take that risk and that volatility. So, I just want to give you a little bit of the background and history on that.
And just to piggyback on Jeff's comment on volatility, the time that I've been superintendent, the gas price has been pretty flat. And visiting with Mike, I think I agree with him. The reason for the not-so-volatile prices is the technology they have now with the drilling operations and with power plants converting over to natural gas, that keeps it flat all throughout the year. In the past, the prices went up in the heating season and then dropped in the summer. Here recently, the last couple, three years, sometimes it's even going the other way around. Sometimes we can buy gas cheaper in the winter season, in our heating season, compared to the summer season. But I think that is a big impact on the volatility of the gas prices.
The other thing I want to bring up is, part of the reason that we're just bringing this up right now, and like Jeff said, we need to look at if we want to build in some more rate stabilization into our own rates. Well, we have, it looks like now, the report may have been off by a little bit, it looks like we have about a year to go through, where it'll take at least a year for us to officially withdraw from the LPP. And so, but we need authorization at this point to go ahead and start back into motion, and we needed some type of formal action or letter from our control board here, you guys. And so, this is just the first step of a process that will take us probably over a year to actually get to a point where we're no longer in the program, and we can look at what it's going to take to build in some rate stabilization into our own rates.
And then, on the flip side of that, is when we, if in the future we want to add back into the program, it takes a year as well. So, it's, you know, getting out and getting back in, it's not an overnight thing, as was explained in the previous presentation, these things have to be forecasted well in advance. So, that's part of the wise decision to look at making sure we have an adequate reserve. If the rates in the market start to get extremely volatile, getting back in will take a year and making sure the city's protected in that time.
Can I ask a question on, okay, you said it takes like a year, and we find out, like, six months from now, that it's not going the way we thought it would. At that time, can we go ahead and stop it, or does it just keep on proceeding, and then we have to wait for another year before we get back on?
That would be something we'd have to talk brandy divine about, because MPGA, they go out ahead. When you're in the LPP, they'll go out six months to a year, or a heading, to buy the gas. So, I mean, that would be a touch, that'll be some of our investigation that we'll be looking into, if you guys do give us a go-ahead to investigate a little farther into it, to see if it will fit for the city.
Well, I want to thank Tony for his efforts, and Brent, too, to look for ways to save our ratepayers money. I think that's an important thing that we're doing, because ultimately, that's who we work for, are the citizens, and trying to find ways to make their rates more reasonable is definitely an important aspect of Tony's job and Brent's job. And so, I want to thank Tony for the effort and time that he's taken to work with Mike McFadden to get this put together.
Yes, I have a quick question. So, if, it kind of ties on to what Joe was asking. So, if we have that year period of time while we're coming out of this, if suddenly, right, you know, because that's how things work, you know, suddenly we're at that, we're suddenly out, and then we've got that whole year, are we, is a year timeframe enough for us to put enough in reserves to be able to accommodate, or are we sitting pretty comfortably reserves-wise? So, if something happened in that first couple of years after?
My comfort level would be that we're sitting in a position that we would be able to handle anything that we would see here.
Yep.
I like that answer.
Wouldn't we be able to just go back to what we were used to do when Bob and Ron were here? We would purchase our gas in the summertime, store it at a lower price, and then utilize that gas during the winter months?
See, we are actually still doing that right now. We still, we never have quit doing that.
We just don't have the fluctuation of gas prices.
We're not getting the cheap, cheap gas in the summers like we were in the past.
You're right.
Because of the demand or the towers.
But isn't that typically where the fluctuation's going to be, is when during the demand times of the month?
Yeah. But we are still storing gas in the summertime. You know, most of the time, it is cheaper then compared to the heating season in the past few years in the time I've been in my position. But, you know, there has been times that it's been the other way, too, just because of the demand and the power plants converting them.
Actually, I'm glad that Carol's still here, Maurice, she can answer this question for me. How many of our plants that we have in MEAN are converting to gas right now, or do we have some, or are we all just coal right now?
MEAN does not own any outright owning gas units, but we purchase power from gas units. That is part of our portfolio, so we do have some. But still, at this point, most of our energy comes from coal, because those are the plants that MEAN actually owns.
But more and more looking towards, going towards gas, then, so this explains why we're doing what we're doing now, because there's no peak season now, because if electric power plants are going to gas, that means the demand's still going to be there for the air conditioners, not like right now, where everybody just, gas heaters, which I have, is on full blow right now. Well, luckily, not today.
President Obama made it clear that gas is a grudging field, and so that's why we've had such a push in the industry to convert over to natural gas type of generation. So, we're seeing a lot of it. You know, Carol's correct, we don't have a lot of it, that we don't own any of it, you know, we buy from it, but when you talk around the industry, you see more and more of these plants that are looking for convergence to natural gas.
Thank you.
It is an expensive process to make that transition over, and the units that MEAN owns, the coal units are fairly new units, and would be very, very, very costly. I'm not saying that it won't happen, it's just that that's something, that that's going to be planned, and we have to be planning for that.
So, Carol, I hate to do this to you, but when you speak, you have to go to the mic, because the people at home can't hear you, and they would love to hear your answer.
You're talking really, really loud.
Carol said all, so for you watching at home, Carol said all the right things.
Watch the video, Brent.
Yes.
Any other questions?
At this point, it's our recommendation to move forward with getting out of the LPP, and we will make the approval of the resolution in front of you, so we can start that process.
With that, I would entertain a resolution canceling the levelized purchase plan within MPGA.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the city of Fort Morgan to withdraw from the levelized purchase program with the National Public Gas Agency.
A second.
I have a motion or a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Joe Segura. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comments and audience participation. Josh? Charles? Ty? Seeing then, we'll move on, reports by officials and staff.
Our treasurer has a report, really quick.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's a good one.
It's always good.
Because finance is fun.
Good evening, mayor and council. And finance is fun. This is about utility billing, and it can also be fun. But what I wanted to report to you was just that there, the four people, and the five people who work in utility billing have completed a certification course that was really pretty extensive. It's called Customer Service Representative Professional Certification, and they took it online, but there were three sections to it, and they had to, like, space out when people could work on it, because, of course, they had to serve the public, which is what it's about, at the same time. And so, they would have one set out and do their section, and they had several modules within each section. There were three sections, and each module, of course, had questions to check your understanding, the end of each one of the sections did. And then the final, they had a final that they had to take that was over all three. And just this week, I think Monday, they all completed the course. And so, I'm really proud of them for sticking with it and getting that handled, and they all got certificates for it. So, anyway, that's it.
Good, thanks, Jeanne.
Thank you.
Tell them all, good job.
Chelsea.
I just wanted to give a quick comp plan update, in case you didn't attend our last public meeting. I know Lisa was there, stopped by. We're kind of looking at initial opportunities. So, the last documents you guys saw were those snapshots of existing conditions, so now we're kind of moving forward into what our opportunities and options for the future are. I know right now, on the comp plan website, you can go through and actually do that survey if you didn't get the chance to attend the public meeting. So, we would love to have your input on all of those, and it's on the website, which is also available through our website.
Somebody asked me, when I was kind of nudging people to go do the survey, is there a deadline for when we're going to stop? I guess we never stop taking input, but...
The opportunities are going to be taken to the technical advisory committee next week, so I mean, it would be preferred to get them in as quickly as possible, but that will be maintained until, obviously, we finalize it, so any new input we'll continue to gather.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
The only other thing I have is we've changed the format of the report significantly. It's a lot shorter. It's identifying key items that kind of measure what's going on in the different departments. Obviously, if there's anything else you want to know, please let me know, and we can get the information for you. We've just gone through and picked some of the things that would give you an idea of what's going on operationally in the various departments throughout the city. And if there's other statistics or things that you'd like to know about the departments, please let me know. We can add those, too. If there's something that's just not helpful, let me know. We can take that away. But this new format will probably make it easier for you to get through and kind of track what's happening in each department, month by month. I think one of the more important reports that will be out here in the next month will be, the financial report will be included with this on a monthly instead of a quarterly basis. That's something that Jeanne and I talked about doing, is making sure that we can provide you with the most up-to-date information of what's happening financially within the city, and that will be included as also under an addendum to this report every month. So, you'll see that next month. So, if you have any feedback or comments, please let me know. Other than that, I don't think we have anybody else that... All right.
Bids, meetings, and announcement. Mr. Brenner?
Thank you, your honor. The city is accepting bids right now for the Burlington-Barlow Waterline Project until 4:30 p.m. on March 4th, for the South Main Street Improvements Project, a design-build project, until 4:30 p.m. on March 8th. Sealed bids for a four-wheel-drive, one-ton pickup truck for the fire department until 3:45 p.m. on March 9th. Upfitting two police patrol vehicles and one code enforcement vehicle until 4:00 p.m. on March 10th. Fiber-to-the-home network design and engineering until 4:00 p.m. on March 10th. Proposals for the sale of real property owned by the city of Fort Morgan until 3:00 p.m. on March 15th. And city complex building entryway ADA upgrades and other design-build project until 4:30 p.m. on March 17th. Under meetings, next Tuesday, the city council planning and budget priorities retreat will start at 5:00 p.m. at the Hampton Inn. On March 9th, at 5:30 p.m., the golf course advisory board is scheduled to meet at Quail Dunes. On March 14th, the senior center advisory board is scheduled to meet at 1:00 p.m. at the senior center. And also, on the 14th, the planning commission meets at 4:30 p.m. here at city hall. The next city council regular meeting will be March 15th, and that will begin, again, with a meet here at 4:30 p.m. for tours of the police department and municipal court, returning back to city hall for the regular meeting at approximately 6:00 p.m.
Okay. We have an executive session scheduled. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
I think that was a signature sign for a second.
We have a motion by Kevin and a second by Christine.
Somebody actually has to say it.
I'm sorry, who was the motion by?
Aye. Close. We will adjourn to executive session.